Need a director and a producer.
Right, John, I've started recording the Zoom. Sally, if you want to start recording on the digital. And I have 6:59, so whenever you're ready, John, we're waiting for Ken, but I, I'm not sure where he is.
I get close enough in a second.
Yeah, you don't have to wear your mask while you're sitting at the podium.
This will begin the, the regular meeting and work session agenda for Woodland Park Planning Commission on July 23rd, 2020, and we'll go through this. And then, once we get this started, we'll talk about ex parte, we'll go over this and read this just briefly before we go into that. At this point, order and roll call.
I will acknowledge everyone who is here. John DeVoe is here, Jeff Watson is by Zoom, Lee Brown by Zoom, Ellen Carrick here by Zoom, Vicki Good here through Zoom. Ken Hartsfield is absent at this moment. If he tunes in, we'll note that. Larry Larson via Zoom, Jerry Penlin via Zoom, and Peter Scanlon via Zoom. We do have a quorum with eight members present.
Okay, if you'd like to join us for the pleasure of allegiance, please.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The, the approval of the minutes for April 3rd, 2020, anybody have any comments? Anybody have any changes? Anybody want to say anything about that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the amendments.
No mood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Negative, same sign, none heard, those are approved. So, we shall start the public hearing. Item A is sub 2020-02 and SPR 20-03. A request for a preliminary plat and site plan review from Brecken Hills LLC, Mark McNabb, and Quaking Aspens LLC, Gary Edmonds, to develop a 32-unit multifamily project, 16 duplex, including public and private open space, and a public right-of-way located at 19569 East US Highway 24, 13.09 acre track in the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 30, Township 12 South, Range 68- W6 Primer Meridian, we'll spit it out, and then multifamily residential suburban MFS and community commercial CC Zone District. So who's going to start this off? I think it's, aren't you going to do that, Laura?
I am, Mr. Chairman. So I will begin my presentation. Can everyone see the screen? Does it say Brecken Heights Townhomes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so tonight is July 23rd, 2020, is the Planning Commission Public Hearing on this Preliminary Plat and Site Plan Review Council Hearing on this will be scheduled for August 20th, 2020. This is located, this vicinity map on the right shows you that the site is located pretty much across from the Walmart, the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park. And it is on the east side of Highway 24 as you're going westbound. This is an air photo showing the site in bold yellow. And what it does is it also shows you some of the topography that exists, some of the vegetation, and some of the surrounding land uses. So for instance, to the north is Gator Mountain Subdivision. It's a 9.24 acre, single-family unplatted tract of land in this area right here, immediately north. Also, the Elk Grove Townhomes, which have begun their, their development, but still have many undeveloped parcels as part of their condominium complex, their townhome complex. And then there are other residential properties to the north. To the east is Sun Valley Park in two tracts of land, 6.22 acres total, and Sun Valley Drive going north-south. And then the Mountain Solar Subdivision, which you can see these homes immediately to the east. And then there's the Pike National Forest, the Avenger Mine further east of that, and then El Paso County Boundary is right there as well. To the south, you see Morning Sun Drive doing this arc coming east. And then there is the Morning Sun Business Park with the Denny's adjacent to the highway, and then vacant commercial parcels, and some built commercial parcels further to the south. To the west, you see US Highway 24 and its eastbound and westbound lanes, or I'm sorry, yes, eastbound and westbound. And then you see the Walmart lots that are currently undeveloped, and the Starbucks, and the Walmart parking lot. And of course, the Walmart store is just further south off of this map. And then also to the west, on the other side of the highway, is the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park that you can see right here. This red line is the boundary between the City of Woodland Park and Teller County. These are some street view shots. This is looking from Highway 24 to the south. You can see Morning Sun Drive here on the, on the far right-hand side. This is the CDOT approved access off of Highway 24 into the site. So we're looking into the site here. And this is pretty much the south half of the site. And then from that same CDOT access on this lower photograph, you can look into the site, and you can see some of the steeper topography on the northern half of this parcel. This is from the intersection of Morning Sun Drive and Highway 24. This is Highway 24 and Morning Sun Drive, looking diagonally northeast into the site. And you can see that this is more or less the flatter part of the site. And this is further east along Morning Sun Drive, looking at that little cutout with the mailboxes and the surface with asphalt that is shown on all of the other maps. This is the official community plan, the comprehensive plan map from the 2010 City of Woodland Park Comprehensive Plan. The site we are looking at is encircled here in a lime green color. And you can see that the eastern portion of the site has been designated as a multifamily residential area for future development, and those triangular pieces adjacent to the highway have been designated as commercial in the comprehensive plan. This is the zoning for, the zoning map for this neighborhood, and you can see the area that we're looking at right here is the zone on this 13-acre tract that is multifamily residential MFS, and then the, the area of this 13-acre tract that is zone community commercial here, immediately adjacent to the highway. So this is the proposed preliminary plat and site plan. The entire parcel is 13.9, 13.09 acres in size. Here's that little cutout that I was mentioning earlier, and the mailboxes are kind of in this area too. What this shows, this, the red line shows the boundary of the 13.9 acre tract, the highway here, immediately to the west, and Sun Valley Park immediately to the east. Morning Sun Drive curving around here at the southern boundary. This is the 5.59 acre portion that the applicant is proposing to develop as residential. It will be for a total of 16 duplexes shown in the blue rectangles. Each of these duplexes have two units, which is typical of a duplex, and for a total of 32 single-family units on this site. And look at that, I forgot to highlight unit number 15 and unit number 16, but they are in fact there. So we have a total of 16 duplexes and 32 single-family units. The proposed lot layout in a preliminary, in the preliminary plat is shown by these dark black lines. And, and it's shown in the plat that was distributed to everybody in the lighter, lighter lines. But if, in effect, what it does is it'll cut each of these duplexes in half, and the townhome plat will delineate the private lot that will go with each unit. And so that's kind of what it's going to look like. So you can see on the Sun Valley side, it's a private piece of land, a lot, with each half of the duplex that goes right up to the boundary with the park, and goes right up to Brecken Court, which is going to be a public right-of-way. And that's pretty much how it's laid out all along this, these eastern duplexes. And then these duplexes here on this middle portion will be platted, and it's shown in these rectangles that surround the duplexes. What this map also shows is the shaded area is the sidewalk proposed adjacent to the road, to the asphalt. The sidewalk will be in the right-of-way. And you can see that the sidewalk stops here about the middle on the west side of Brecken Court, but they are proposing a sidewalk all the way to the cul-de-sac on the east side of Brecken Court. The applicant's also proposing 4.26 acres of public open space outlined in red here. This open space is contiguous with Sun Valley Park to the east. It also proposes, the applicant's also proposing a trail that will be a 10-foot trail, 10-foot right-of-way, if you will, within easement trail within this public open space, which will be dedicated to the city, followed by a 10-foot wide easement through tract C here. Within this 10-foot wide space is going to be an eight-foot breeze material surface trail. The applicant is also proposing some picnic tables that will go in this area. The public dedication will be a part of the Parks and Rec open space and master plan for parks, and it will connect the Sun Valley Park to the east with and through this trail to the trail that follows along Highway 24 to the west. So it will be a contiguous open space, and, and you'll be able to traverse from one end to the other through that. The applicant's also proposing a public right-of-way called Brecken Court. It will be .81 acres total right-of-way area within the plat, and it will only serve at this point the residential subdivision. And then finally, the applicant is also proposing 3.24 acres that will, that are currently zoned commercial within, adjacent to the highway, excuse me. And this area is currently undeveloped and does not have a development plan with it at this time. It is zoned CC, community commercial, and the applicant has some ideas for it, and I'll let you ask him those questions. At any rate, all the detail that we have with this preliminary plat and site plan is for the tract layouts, for the commercial tract, for the public open space, for the residential portion, and they will come in with filings, townhome filings, for each of these, either all at once for the residential duplexes and those lots, or in phases with, depending on how he schedules his construction. This is a, just a typical look at what the elevations might look like for one of the duplex units. This is the front coming in. This would be the back, perhaps adjacent to the park, and this would be the side that is not attached, obviously. The applicant is proposing high-quality materials with stone and stucco with neutral colors at this point. So staff did a complete review for compliance with Title 17, the subdivision requirements, and we found that it complies with the preliminary plat requirements in Section 1720 of the municipal code. That section deals with the preparation of the preliminary plat, what the drawing has to contain, and the information that has to be on it. It also discussed, we also looked at Section 1740, excuse me, which are the design standards for subdivisions. It deals with the design of the site and the site characteristics, the street layout, the drainage, the lot layout, and the use intensity. Staff did find compliance as proposed by the applicant with all of Title 17 subdivisions that are applicable to this preliminary plat. Staff did also a compliance review with Chapter 1834053, which is a permitted-use site plan. The applicant did request that this permitted-use site plan go through the same public hearing process that the subdivision plat is going through. So that is why the site plan is before you tonight, and it will be a combined recommendation for approval of the site plan and the preliminary plat. The site plan standards deal with the design and layout of the entire subdivision and development. It also looks at whether or not it complies with the 2010 Comprehensive Plan, with the current regulations, both the subdivision and zoning regulations that we have in place, whether the traffic will be impacted, and the applicant is proposing 32 units, which will produce 295 average vehicle trips on a daily basis with a peak of, I believe it was 12 at peak times. And with those numbers, there was no proposal or need for any improvements to Morning Sun Drive at this point for this residential development. Standards also, the plan, site plan standards also deal with the site characteristics and any hazards. There are no FEMA flood planes or any other hazards. There is a, some steep slopes, which were shown by the applicant on his submittal. Most of that is going to be in the public dedicated areas, and we'll have a trail through it. There are no other hazards, except that the applicant will be submitting, per the recommendation, a wildfire hazard mitigation plan for both the residential portion and the public portion that will be dedicated. That plan, we hope, will show limbing and removal of dead or hazardous trees within the area that's to be dedicated for a public park and within the residential area, to the extent that there are any trees in that residential area. The site plan standards also deal with utility layouts and feasibility of bringing water and sewer to the site, as well as feasibility of containing onsite drainage. Also deals with any dangers proposed by this applicant. There is no hazardous materials proposed with this residential development, or any other foreseeable danger related to this proposed subdivision. And the, finally, this, the standards for site plan review deal with compatibility with the surrounding residential and commercial neighborhood, and the streets, and all of the ability for this proposal to fit in with its surroundings. Staff did find that the applicant has submitted a plan, and a site plan that is compatible and meets all of our site plan standards. So this preliminary plat application, as well as the site plan were, were sent, notices were sent to adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the site. Two posters were placed onsite, and we did a public notice of tonight's meeting in the Pike's Peak Courier. We did send the applications to review by city departments, the Public Works Department, the City Engineer Utilities, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board even looked at it, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board had no, no concerns, and were tickled and pleased by the proposal to dedicate 4.5 acres as a public park. Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District had no concerns, neither did IRE, Black Hills CenturyLink, or the telecom companies. So staff does recommend that, based on the findings in this staff report and as presented at the public hearing, that the Planning Commission recommends that city council approve the request for the Brecken Heights Preliminary Plat with the variances as listed, and that the Brecken Heights Site Plan Review from Brecken Heights LLC, Mark McNabb, and Quaking Aspens LLC, Gary Edmonds, who is the property owner, to develop a 32-unit multifamily residential project, 16 duplexes, including public and private open space and a public right-of-way located at 19569 East US Highway 24, which is a 13.9 acre tract in the multifamily residential suburban Zone District and the community commercial Zone District, subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to the municipal code Section 1752010, and given the site topography and finding no detriment to the public good, and in keeping with the intent of the Comprehensive Plan, approval of this preliminary plat authorizes the following variances from the subdivision regulations. A variance, a 10-foot variance from municipal code Section 174140 from 50 feet to 40 feet for the width, the minimum width of the local road right-of-way, which is Brecken Court, that will have complete curb and gutter. So where it's supposed to be 50 feet, the applicant is proposing 40 feet, and staff does not object to that. The applicant's also requiring a variance from municipal code Section 1740220, which is a variance from a 40-foot lot frontage for each proposed townhome lot to some number less than 40 feet, because it varies depending on which lot you're looking at. But it is depicted on the preliminary plat, and it will apply to lots 1B to A10B, 11A and B, and 12 to 14A and B. Condition number two, the first final plat to be considered shall include a dedication statement for the 10-foot wide public trail easement in tract C, that's the commercial tract, a dedication statement for Brecken Court to be dedicated to the City of Woodland Park as a public road, a dedication statement for public park, which is all of tract B as proposed by the applicant, a draft of covenants for the subdivision, including the establishment of a homeowners association, and a note on this first final plat outlining the wildfire mitigation requirements that are highlighted in the report that will be submitted by the applicant before the city count, or before the final approval of the subdivision plat. Condition number three, prior to installation of any infrastructure, the applicant shall submit and receive approval of zoning, a zoning development permit for the infrastructure proposed, showing compliance with all zoning and engineering standards, which shall include the final utility plan, the final grading and erosion control plan, the final street plan, the final drainage plan, the stormwater management plan, the final wildfire mitigation plan for the 13-acre tract, and all applicable development impact fees as, as identified. That concludes my staff report, Mr. Chairman. I'll leave this air photo up. Are there any questions from any members of the Planning Commission, or you, Mr. Chairman?
I will hold that, and let's go to the staff for the applicant's presentation, and then I'm sure we'll catch a few at that point. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, applicant's presentation, please. Name, rank, serial number, you've done that before.
Yes, I believe it is on.
Okay. I'm Mark McNabb, and we live in Woodland Park, and we're the developers for this project. And I just thank everybody for coming and taking the time to listen to what we have to play for. A little history behind us looking at this property. We looked at it about a year and a half ago, and we were looking at maximum density project, including the area that we're now, we're now considering donating to the city for a park. And, but there was some things that we ended up not liking about that, and so we backed off, and we've come back in the last six months, looked at it again with a whole different outlook, which we think is a whole lot better for the community there and for the city. Going with low density, and which also fits in really well with the sewer maximum needs in that, in the area there. So we're well qualified in that. But the, so our intent, you know what all that is, I won't go through that, the survey, replat, et cetera. But our main goal is to offer attainable housing for the Teller County area, specifically Woodland Park, to create a community, community setting that incorporates low density, living with Woodland Park City Park area for hiking and other recreational activities. This creates community with the neighboring existing residential communities and the new proposed project. The proposed city park will help tie in the Sun Valley Park Trail Master Plan hiking trail to connect the north area to Highway 24 to help complete the loop. So in, as far as the park goes, that's 4.26 acres, as Laura's explained. The approximate value of that is $525,000. We, as a developer, will prepare the trail and picnic areas, including the picnic tables, to make a nice park setting all the way through from the east to the west side. There will be city access from both the east existing Sun Valley Park and Highway 24, completing the access from the highway to Sun Valley Park, and other trails leading to the National Forest northeast of Woodland Park. Some of this information we, we got from Cindy, who explained that in the meetings we had with the Park and Rec Committee. By the way, there's some stunning Pike's Peak views from picnic areas on the trail, pretty, pretty outstanding. When the Highway 24 front section of the property is developed, there will be permanent trail head parking on the Highway 24 side of the park trail, so you can literally park your car and get on the trail and walk the trail. That'll happen in Phase 2. By creating a park setting and a proposed development and planning low-density dwellings, we will have the opportunity to save hundreds of trees, keep the natural habitat as close to the existing as possible, and yet maintain fire maintenance control. And Laura has explained about the dwellings. They're attached dwellings, full-size homes with a combination of two-bedroom, two-baths, or three bedrooms, two baths, with full living and dining areas with two-car garages for each unit. Units run about 1,375 square feet. They'll be full, fully-built units to all the codes, just like any other home in Woodland Park. The exterior finishes will be stucco and stone, similar to our homes we built in Stone Ridge Subdivision, with the same amenities and quality materials. Colors will be earth tones from trim to stucco and stone finishes to blend into the natural setting. Prices will start in the mid-300s, along with the present interest rates will allow us to reach the teachers, first responders, millennial first home buyers, and retirees with fixed incomes, and others with incomes that have previously not been able to approve them to purchase in Woodland Park. Management, there will be an HOA to oversee ongoing exterior building maintenance, grounds upkeep, garbage disposal, and general subdivision quality appearance. And just so you know, we as the developer will be owning several homes in the proposed project, so we'll have personal long-term interest in maintenance of the subdivision. As far as the commercial front property, we're, we're analyzing that to try to decide what to do, but we're still, our heart is in the area of trying to supply as much attainable housing as possible in Woodland Park. So we're leaning towards that in the front commercial property as a low-density apartments, which would help in the desperate need that the city has for rentals. Those would be done very tastefully and classy and controlled as far as maintenance, the same as the units we're proposing now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. What we'll do now at this point is talk to the members of the commission. And do you have any questions? It's time to wave your hand, turn on a button, do something, and we'll recognize you to talk and address it to either staff or present presenters. Oh, come on.
Yeah, I have a question, a couple. What do you propose? Does a developer proposes the boundary between the park and the rear of the homes? Will they come right up to the park and?
There will be a qualified setback from the property boundary at the park to the homes. We're still looking at exactly how we want to do it, but at this point, we're considering a split rail fence that would go the full length of the, between the park and the homes. And then probably plant some trees, we have some trees there we're hoping to save, but we're probably going to have to plant some along the backside there.
Anything else, Jeff?
Yeah, while you're up there, the, I noticed in material I read that historically this property at one time had some issues with regard to sewage and spills and that sort of thing. Is it, is the ground clear now or has anything been done to mitigate that historically or currently?
As far as we know, there's no sign of it. We have engineers working on a geological report for that to give us more accurate readings on that, but we have no reason to believe there'll be a problem.
Anything else?
Was there, was there any environmental impact done when this was occurred?
I don't know historically what happened there. Do you know anything about that, Sally?
I do know that the mobile home park that was there in the seventies and late eighties is when the state closed that and there was cleanup required.
Required and done?
Required and done.
Thank you, Jeff. Ellen, you had your hand up.
I have my hand up just about the private drive that's providing access to lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. So you have no concern that, you know, that will be maintained by the homeowners association and that will be sufficient for the six units? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the homeowners association will maintain that. We're going to have a homeowners association that won't be a one-hundred percent typical homeowners association that plow streets because we have a public street and some of those things, but most everything will be included, especially quality control.
Okay, there's, there's a bunch of you that are, that are on that your, your picture isn't showing. So if anybody else wants to say something from the commission, please, now.
I have a quick question. Who or what is Brecken?
That is a Scottish name. We're Scottish and so we tend to go that way. We did that up in the, up in the project, up in Paradise filing four. We named the street Lachlan Way, which is a Scottish name. We named the other street Highlands Court. So that's basically it is, we're, we're Scottish.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do.
Quick question, it's Peter.
Go ahead, Pete.
Oh, thank you. Thanks to the staff and for yourself for the really good presentation tonight. Whenever we use, whenever we hear the word affordable housing, it gets a lot of kerfuffle-ing going. So I'm, my question is part of, partly rhetorical and for the record, by affordable housing in this case, what you mean is that the price of the homes, proposed price, is within a range that, as you said, teachers and first responders and other people who otherwise have to live in other places could in theory afford to purchase. This has nothing to do with any type of government subsidy program, is that correct?
One-hundred percent correct.
Okay, I, I really just wanted to clarify that for purposes of the record and I appreciate that, thank you.
Larry Larson, did I hear you waving your hand in the dark back there?
Yes, you did hear me. First of all, Mr. McNabb, I, I really appreciate your comments about the rail fence between the homes and the park. I think it's very important that that be maintained as an open area instead of a closed fence. I think that will enhance both the park and this particular development. Question I have for you is looking at the preliminary class, site plan, there is a, the trail splits, the commercial track, tract C. Have you thoroughly thought that out and make sure that that trail will not impact any future commercial development for that particular site?
We don't believe so because that'll be alongside the street that comes in from the C dot entrance. It'd be just like a sidewalk. And then it will be able to have a right-of-way going across any driveways that would be going to the northwest, I would call it, to that section. So it, it, the whole thing won't be ma- maintained as gravel per se, but it will be the right-of-way for the trail. The, the parking area will be at the, where that trail comes up against tract B. And so right there is where we'll put a little parking area so that once C is developed, there'll be a place where if somebody wants to come and park and then go on the trail, they can.
That's very helpful, thank you very much. I got a question for Laura. Laura, with the, with the proposed development on tract C, when that happens, what will be the applications and the requirements of that particular site? Will it be a site plan, amendment to the preliminary plan? I can't visualize jumping right into the final plat.
No, this will be platted by the time it comes to development. This will be platted probably with the first filing of the plat of this residential. Right now, this entire thirteen acre tract is unplatted. So at, at some point, before you can begin construction and/or convey any of these residences, this entire perimeter has to be platted. And what's going to happen is with that first filing, with that first plating, this commercial tract will be platted in, in the configuration as proposed, as well as the first six units maybe, and this public tract be this public park. So that will be platted and then the next step would be a site plan review for an administrative site plan review. If it complies with all of the uses in the CC zone, if it's a conditional use permit, then it will be a public hearing before the planning commission and city council.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I can't see if she still has the map up.
Vicky has her hand up, but you're muted, Vicky.
The question that I have is concerning the safety of highway twenty-four and morning sun. That is the most, probably has the most amount of accidents probably in the whole city. It's a constant accident area at that stop, intersection and stoplight. Are any improvements going to be done to morning sun, like a turn lane or something to alleviate, eliminate the additional risk on morning sun and highway twenty-four? Because having the additional traffic turning left there and then you have all the traffic from all those houses coming down from Sun Valley and all that feeds in there, they might have to wait before they can turn left into their new subdivision, which will back up traffic possibly up even to highway twenty-four. I mean, how much, how much, how many car pile or stack-ups do we have in that corridor?
Does that make sense?
Hello, my name is, but I'm with JR in Naring, fifty-four seventy-five Tech Center Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado. And I think I can answer your question. Laura, could you pull up the, the aerial where we could look at that intersection? And in summary, there are no intersection improvements proposed, nor is there any signalization, timing changes proposed. As, as the staff report indicated, there's, in a peak hour, morning and evening, there's twelve vehicles entering and exiting, or entering or exiting onto morning sun drive. That, that's, that's not a high percentage of the total community that is using morning sun drive. But there, there currently is a right-turn lane that is, that has been built as part of that intersection improvement before. It's, it's not a very long right-turn lane, but it is a free right-turn lane. So that's not signal-controlled, you're able to move on to the, to the lane and enter into traffic on twenty-four. Every, the, straight through or left turn would be signalized. And if you look at the distance on this aerial, I, I am not aware that traffic has ever stacked up to the existing drive, which is being used by the Caldwell Banker Building. But I, we did not do with COVID, very hard to do traffic counts, nor are they necessarily always accurate because there is a difference in traffic today. Maybe less so today than there was two months ago. But in, in summary, there is no improvements proposed. When that, when that intersection was originally designed, if you look on that aerial map, there was an additional left-hand turn lane coming up from, from the springs to turn onto Walmart. And what they did is they, they eliminated it because there wasn't enough traffic to justify. So I know they, they engineered that site for, for, for a lot more traffic than it would, than it is. It's certainly, this is a C dot control, or Colorado Department of Transportation-controlled intersection and their, their standards are very, very significant. The, the left turn, it is able to have a double left into Walmart if it was ever warranted, but you have to hit a certain number. Originally put it in with a double and then they eliminated it. But the biggest problem we've had with accidents out there is the fact that it's still fifty-five miles an hour. It doesn't slow down to forty-five until you hit the Swiss Chalet. And if they would get that to be forty-five about a block before Walmart, it would slow everybody down and give a lot more timing for people to stop because they go through, if it's fifty-five, they go through at sixty-five. And we need to petition C dot to slow that down prior to Walmart. So the, and coming out from Woodland Park is already fifty-five. To get that to be forty-five till they get past Walmart, and I think you'd see a decrease in accidents.
And you would, and as, as we all know, on Friday afternoon, it's five miles an hour from there into town. Thank you.
Yeah, my main concern is the traffic that's going to be pulling in there heading from, say, I'm not worried about Walmart per se, but the traffic, the turn lane is quite extensive at that area that is on the north side of town. And then you're making a left to turn onto morning sun, turning a left on the other, yeah, right there. You're turning left to get in there. There's, I mean, you see a lot of traffic on that particular road, turning left to go into morning sun. And say you had five cars pulling in, one was trying to turn left on a blind curve. I'm just wondering if more road improvement would need to be done on morning sun just because of the consistent, you know, the blind curve, you have a lot going on there. And then if you're going to have somebody suddenly stopping to make a left-hand turn, it might cause a lot of problems and more accidents. Because if somebody is coming around the corner in front of Caldwell Banker, which is a blind curve and they're coming around the corner and suddenly somebody is going to be trying to make a left-hand turn and they can't because they see the other person coming. And then suddenly you have all the traffic that was on highway twenty-four, they get the green arrow to turn left and suddenly you're going to start getting backups.
At this point in time, we can look at things to alleviate that at the beginning. And then realize, you know, try to fix it after the problem starts is a lot worse than trying to fix, prevent it from happening.
Or after somebody dies because there's too much of a, you know, stack-up.
C dot may have some traffic analysis that would indicate the left turn volume coming off of twenty-four. We could look at that, our engineer, our traffic engineer could look at it, but there's, there's not much you can do. There's not much you can do to change the condition. The one thing we are doing is we're reconfiguring that driveway and it, it will improve the site distance. But, but I, I think the commissioner's issue is the individual turning left and not seeing the car, which that, that is fully visible from the intersection of highway twenty-four and, and the Walmart intersection. That site distance is, is shown. So it wouldn't be a surprise that there was a car turning left. It may be not noticed because someone's focused in on a turning movement. Most of the difficulty in traffic at that intersection is, is most likely due to the double lefts coming out of Walmart. Anytime you have a double left, you have the opportunity to have an accident because someone drifts. They, they panic and go to the wrong lane, they cross. That's, that's driving the accidents. And I wasn't aware that was the most dangerous intersection. I thought the one to the north was the most dangerous intersection at Safeway. But it's not. We just had a fatality there last week. At, at this intersection. Okay.
Vicky, I did notice that in the staff report, it said that C dot had an opportunity to review this particular project. Laura, did you receive any comments from C dot?
We did not. Okay.
Thanks. Anybody else from the, the commission at this point, not move on to?
Mr. Chairman, I see that Peter has his hand up. I'm not sure if that was his previous question.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I do have one more question, Mr. Chairman. During the presentation, I did hear the word park for tract B. And in the staff report, we talk about open space. There is a big difference between a park and open space. What is it intended to be?
So Commissioner Larson, tract B is proposed to be a contiguous park with Sun Valley Park to the trail on highway twenty-four. It will be dedicated as a public park, but it will not be improved with like a tot lot or swings and that kind of stuff. The only improvements are the breeze material, eight-foot-wide gravel trail within a ten-foot-wide easement area or, or trail area and the picnic tables. So it won't be, it is more of an open space, but it will be dedicated to the city.
Okay, and also in the staff report, you mentioned that the parks advisory board had reviewed this and I'm sure their concerns were cost of maintenance. And certainly with what's being proposed, that's very minimal.
Very minimal, yeah, and they, they really liked and appreciated the proposal.
Okay, thank you. I've been for a while.
Laura, where's the, where are the people that want to come to and enjoy the walk in that public park, kind of park? Where's, where's the parking lot?
Well, as the applicant had stated, let me, let me bring it up again. It's going to be between tract C and tract, hang on.
Oh, we have nothing on our screen except the word zone.
Yeah. Is the map up now?
No.
No.
No. I wonder if we lost the video.
The map is up.
Map is up.
You see it. Proposed preliminary plan and site plan.
But there's not, it's not being broadcast in Chambers? Sally, can you see the map from Chambers?
Now we can.
Okay. All right, so the applicant is proposing with future development to have a trailhead kind of in this area here between Track B and Track C, and it'll probably be developed with the commercial development or within this, this tract here. It won't be developed with this portion. So there is a small parking along the streets, you can park along Brecken Court for, for this portion of the trail that's going to be developed with the residential development.
And how will the, the public get to that? Will they have to come off of twenty-four, or how are they going to get to that?
Yep, off of twenty-four to Morning Sun Drive, unless they park on the street. Hang on.
And if I could add, this is Sally, that the park and open space area is really intended for a neighborhood amenity, so it ties in nicely to the Sun Valley Park, and Sun Valley Park has a master plan, a concept plan in the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan, where there's a proposal for additional parking down by the mailboxes.
So if, if people wanted to park in the Sun Valley Park trailhead, they could walk over to get to connect to here. But like, like I said, and like the applicant said, there is going to be a trailhead approximately in this area here, which will be developed with the future tract development.
Thank you.
This is Ellen. So I have a ques, so Brecken Heights Road is not a private road, it will be city-owned, so people can walk to the trailhead or walk their dogs on it, even if they're not living in that community?
Correct.
Anything else, Ellen?
That's it, thank you.
Anybody else, before we go to open public comment?
Is the question, this is Jeff. Is that current dirt road, is that going to be Brecken Court?
Yes, pretty much, it'll be aligned kind of in this, this area here with the cul-de-sac up in here.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry, but I think I, I miscalled it in my staff report, it is Brecken Court, not Brecken Heights. It is Brecken Heights subdivision.
You stand corrected.
Thank you.
On the back of all the properties that go on the, that would be probably the east side of the property, that butts up against the other properties that are coming off of the other road, with the split rail fence was you talked about, have you ever thought of, of not allowing sheds and that kind of stuff to populate that area behind those houses so that it, it has a cleaner look to it for the people behind it? You wouldn't be opposed to that? Okay. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the open, open the public comment, and at this point, I have two people signed up. I have Kimberly Butcher, you're up. Name, rank, serial number.
I am a resident of Sunny Glen. First of all, I just want to touch on something that was just, just said, before I start on my items of concern. She stated, I don't recall her name, stated there would be street parking for this park. I want to confirm there will be no street parking on Sun Valley. I live on Sun Valley Road. I will not be okay with people parking on my street. I have my driveway that is connected to Sun Valley Drive. I am not okay with people parking along my street. Every single day, I have retired, I, I live in a retirement community, basically, these people are established, they've lived there for twenty years, they have their retirement homes there, they walk their dogs down my street. I don't want to be walking around vehicles, I don't want people walking their dogs around vehicles. If people are in these vehicles, that runs a risk of an elderly person or a dog being killed by people sitting in their vehicles on my side of the road. I will not be okay with that.
What you're talking about, as for the, for the benefit of everybody else, is when you, when you come on that and go past the, the, the business section here, come up to the stop sign.
And you take a left.
And you take a left, you're talking that street there.
Yes, that's exactly where I'm talking.
Okay.
A parking lot next to the mailboxes, I would be completely fine with, but I am not okay with people parking on this street. We have vehicles that zoom up and down that street, I have a five and eight-year-old, I don't think parking on that street would be at all appropriate. That's just to clarify that, that made me very angry when that came up.
And I don't disagree with you.
So I, I want to start by saying, we picked this house September ninth of last year. We, we wanted to get out of Fountain, Colorado, because the amount of crime that increased there, the amount of apartment complexes, the amount of homes, the amount of drug houses next to us. We chose to move up here because it was a military community, it was away from the military community, we are military, I love them, but it was too busy down in Fountain. We wanted to move into the mountains, we wanted to get away from all of the busyness. I grew up in a town in Kansas with thirty-five hundred people. I wanted the small-town feeling. Bringing these houses is not going to keep that small-town feeling. You know, there are sympathies coming from suggesting that firemen and teachers are going to live there. Teachers make a terrible low salary. They won't be able to afford a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home if their spouse does not work. That's not going to work for them. The congestion at the stoplight was just discussed, I still disagree. If there are thirty-two homes in this development, double that for two working parents. If they turn left at that light, it's going to be congestion. I want to know, at the intersection of the, the development intersection there, right across from Caldwell Banker, that intersection, what kind of a stop sign, stoplight are they going to have there? Are they going to have a regular stoplight, because people run stop signs all the time? Are you going to have a regular stop sign turning right there? Because that's on a curb, I don't care if it's a blind curve or if it's an open curb, it's still a curb. And there's probably fifty feet from that road to the right turn. So if you have people standing here, let's say this is the entrance of the facility, of the, of the housing facility, and you're turning right, people are coming around the curve, somebody runs that stop sign, if it's going to be a stop sign, they're trying to get in the right lane, there's an accident right there, just as you guys suggested, there was a fatality at that corner last week. I, I disagree with the entire entrance plan, I, I completely disagree. I disagree with the parking situation, I don't think people are going to, when there's a one-way in and a one-way out situation down to a cul-de-sac with two cars per house setting in a duplex, they're going to have cars lining the streets, they're going to try parking on Sun Valley Drive, I disagree with the layout of the plan, I don't think it's going to work. And so the, the congestion is, is my main concern. As one of them said, I don't remember her name, but she had the, the congestion issue of the left-hand turn. I have sat there for fifteen minutes after a wrestling practice at eight P.M. waiting to turn left. There is so much traffic there, you can't turn left there. So if I sat for fifteen minutes, there's one car, how many cars is it going to take to sit fifteen minutes each turn? There is only two cars allotted to turn left at each light. Two. By the time I get to the turn lane, or to the turn signal that is on the left across the, if I were sitting in the, in the left turn lane, that second turn arrow diagonally to get into my neighborhood is already yellow. That's one car on that left turn lane. It's, it's going to back up. I want to point out something about classy views. The gentleman stated that they're, they want to make sure these houses are classy, and they want to take advantage of that view. I don't mind a park, what I mind is that there are million-dollar homes on the top of that hill, I personally don't own them, but there are million-dollar homes at the top of that hill that are going to be upset that their view has now turned into duplex view. I don't think anyone has ever bought in a million-dollar home to say, I hope there's a duplex view over there, right beside the mountains. I worry that in the future, there would be an increase in the accessways to this division. I worry about entrance and access on Sun Valley Drive, I worry about the amount of trash that's going to be left out, because when you compile a neighborhood so tightly together, you're asking for bears, you're asking for people to leave their trash out. I live across the street, I personally don't want bears in my trash. I keep very control of my trash, it's in my garage. I don't know if the trash is regulated in that, in that development, that they're going to require trash be put in at a certain period of time at night, because the bears are going to come through there. They are in our neighborhood, I had one on my back porch the other night, my trash was put away. So trash is another concern of mine. Additionally, with the traffic, I want to mention that traffic in and out, we don't know the, the jobs, that people are going to have occupations, if they work night shifts, we're going to have lights in our bedroom windows. That's where our house is. I feel like it's a security issue if I tell you where my house is, but it's on Sun Valley Drive. That intersection, I can hear the highway, I can hear the increase in cars. I don't know who evaluated the six-car first thing in the morning thing, but I can tell you, my intersection has no stoplights, no stop signs, and it is busy. You have to sit and wait to turn right off of Morning Sun from Sun Valley Drive to get to that blind corner, to get out of my neighborhood. It is a very busy neighborhood. This is going to additionally increase traffic in the pass. The pass is busy enough as it is at seven-thirty in the morning, I, I work in downtown Colorado Springs, I drive it every morning. The pass is congested, it was just resurfaced. That's another concern of mine is the construction. When construction begins, how are the road plans, where are we going to detour? What is that traffic going to look like during construction? How long is the construction going to take? Because it's going to cause a complete detour and a change in my routine every morning. Do I need to allow fifteen minutes to get my kids up to Gateway and then back down to work because of a construction detour? That is my concern. The entrance of the, the entrance of the construction, how it's going to affect those right and left turn lanes? I feel like Walmart is, is not a concern, there's not enough traffic in, in and out of Walmart into our neighborhood, it's the right and left turn lanes before and after I just want to say that I've loved this community ever since I've been here, and we won't stay in that neighborhood if this comes across the street at all. I was looking at houses today, because I don't want to look at that. I came up here for the trees and the views, we have a great view of Pike's Peak, and right next door, we're going to have houses, that is exactly what we moved away from. So I just came to, to voice my disapproval in all of this. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. James Butcher. Okay. You had your hand up, you didn't sign up, but that's okay, if you want a cup and name, rank, and serial number, okay?
Hello, everybody, my name's Eric Gilganest, I do live on Morning Sun Drive, and I do have to second what Kimberly Butcher just said in regards to the traffic. It does get pretty congested there, especially on Fridays and Thursday, four-day weekends, long weekends in general, and then what ends up happening is that when that traffic gets so backed up, and especially with that recent accident where the individual was killed, cars start going around Morning Sun, so what they'll do is there's three turnoffs prior to actually getting up to, if we can pull up the, the site map, if you don't mind.
Me, or Springs, you can turn off and get to that.
Yeah, you can turn off right, and I think it's right where, there's a realty business. So go, go down a little bit more. There's three turnoffs, but what, what happens is cars inevitably just, they, they take a right and they start cutting through, and it's already bad enough as is. So I can tell you right now that when I push all the way up to this intersection and I get into that right-hand turn lane, I can't see what's coming until I'm actually at that, like, right there. I mean, that tree is going to have to come down, you're going to have to take out all those trees right there in order to see it. So if you guys can see, so this right here, oh, there's three turnoffs, there's a turnoff right here, there's a turnoff right here, there's another turnoff down here, cars end up coming through here, they hop on Morning Sun, they hop out and they hop out on the intersection, and bypass all that traffic. But what I was getting at is that when I get to that intersection right there, I'll turn off there to get to my own house, and you're taking that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when you're pointing at the screen like that, the rest of the commissioners don't, don't see what you're pointing at, so you're going to have to describe it verbally for them, if possible?
Sure. All right, so when I get to that major intersection, and I'm at the, I'm ready to turn onto Morning Sun Drive, and you're taking that right-hand turn, you don't see cars coming until you actually start making that turn, and you're almost seeing that building with the green roof. So I, I do firmly believe that that, that will be a, a point of congestion. And then as far as, you know, what Kimberly was saying, lining cars up on that road, like, that, that's, no, that's a no-go. I do disagree with the building development as well, and here's why, we came here for the views as well. My wife and I both work two jobs, I'm active military myself, and then I have a woodworking business, and then, you know, next thing you know, my neighbors over here, I, I do have to second what they're, what they're saying, is that they moved up here for the views, they moved up here for the same reason that I did, we moved up here to get out of Colorado Springs, I've lived into, in affordable housing before, and I know exactly what that means. It's just not going to work for me. So, cutting down all those trees to build duplexes, and you're talking about saving trees and saving the forest, and now you're knocking out a giant portion of it just to build duplexes, I, it just, it's going to take away from the community of Woodland Park. I'm sorry, like, I understand that there's room to build, but just because there's room to build doesn't mean you have to build. So that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, names, rank, serial number for you two?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Gilbert, was it? Could you come back to the microphone? The newspaper is listening in, and she wanted to know how to spell your name.
G.I.L., G.E.N., A.S.T.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Zumergrad, Z.U.M.E.R.G.R.A.D. I also live in the Morning Sun community, and I also agree with that blind curve at the Caldwell Banker. If you are driving down Morning Sun towards Highway twenty-four, cars, even though that's a pretty sharp turn, cars tend to take it pretty quickly, and if you have somebody headed the opposite direction, turning left onto that new development, I can see accidents happening there. And I was, I'm also a bit concerned about the views and having duplexes and potentially apartment, an apartment building in the commercial space, simply because that whole area is made up of single-family homes, and I just think it would do a disservice to the area as far as views and just congestion. And I'm kind of wondering how, if there will be a, this sort of meeting for the potential apartment buildings at some point, a public hearing?
Yes, yes, the apartment buildings would be a conditional use, so they are required to have planning commission and city council review.
Okay. And I'm also wondering what the setback is between the back of the duplexes and Sun Valley Park? I know they're talking about the split rail fence. I know they're talking about the split rail fence, which sounds nice. And, and I like the idea of not allowing storage, you know, sheds back there, but I am curious about the setback.
It's 25 feet.
All right. I also agree with not allowing parking along Sun Valley Drive. Because there are no sidewalks and there, I agree that there are many people in our community walking along the street with their dogs. And, um, you know, there are plenty of elderly people also walking that. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I've observed, then we'll, we'll go back to commissioners asking some final questions on this, okay? It looks to me, and I'm certainly not an engineer, that where you turn in on that curve, and that was a bone of contention when the other party brought that to us here, that there may be enough room on the commercial side. There certainly isn't on the right side as you come in of making maybe a left hand turn lane as you come in off of, off of 24 or widening, widening something there to get that area a little bit where that sandy area is. Whether that could be, be widened to get another, another lane in there or something, because that's going to be a bottleneck eventually.
It's, it has to do with the timing of the traffic signal. CDOT owns and operates the traffic signals. They can adjust the timing so to allow for more than just two cars at one time for a left hand turn going eastbound. So it's, it's really just an operational issue.
I've never, and I drive that area a lot, and I've never been satisfied with what, the way Pueblo handles it. And that's where it's handled out of Pueblo is, is giving enough time for people to get through there. And as that one gal got up there and say, two cars go through and they're changing light already. And, but that can be changed and slowing the speed limit can be changed. We just have to work together to get that done, to do that. So at this point, commissioners, do you have?
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt, we have some attendees that would like to speak. Mr. Mike Nakai has his hand up and I can actually bring him in to talk if that would be all right with you, Mr. Chairman. Shall I?
Not through with public comment. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. You're not through with public comment?
Go ahead.
I'm going to allow Mike Nakai to talk. Do you want to unmute Mike and?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I have, if you, Laura, if you could put that site plan back up, I, I do have a couple of questions for the applicant.
The site plan or the air photo?
The, no, the site plan.
Okay.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Chairman, you brought up the storage sheds. Is that possible to add that as a, one of the conditions for this, for this project tonight?
Yes, and the developer said that would be okay.
Okay, great. I, I just didn't catch that. Thank you. All right. My question is surrounding those three units, and it's hard for me to say, I think it's 12, 13 and 14 with the private road in there. So I guess how many of the variances are associated with that private road in those configurations? Is that, is that kind of been?
Yes, those, those three that access off the private road, because they don't access off a public road, they need a variance right off the bat. And then some of these smaller ones here.
Okay, great. I, I thought that was the case. And then the, that unit certainly, uh, now that it's blue, I can't tell, maybe 14 and, and 13 are budded right up against the, the next boundary. What is that C?
Yes.
And that is currently zone commercial and it's up in the air what that's going to be, right? So, um, it seems to me that if that, if that development does go through commercial, you're going to end up having those two units budded within how many feet of a commercial lot? And then since that lot is so skinny up against 24, I'm assuming the parking will be up against 24. And so this, you know, these people could literally be 30 feet from a commercial structure. Am I, am I missing something here?
Mike, if you were be looking at the topo map of this, you'd find out that there are some very steep slopes, almost like a a wall or a dirt or a wall landscaping, if you will, that will block that, will block that area from the commercial area.
Okay.
You look at the gradients on it.
Okay. So, so they're grading it on the, but they're grading it down on the, on the duplex side. And they could grade it down on the commercial side as well. If we don't know, right?
Oh, and no on the final plot.
Yeah. So I, I guess my, my question is, is it seems to me that in order to, to shoehorn that 14 unit into the project, you had to put in a road, a private road, which I think Ellen already raised a concern about snow removal on that because that the city won't take care of that. Supposedly the homeowners association is going to take care of that. But I'm guessing that the other, you know, units that don't have anything to do with that road aren't going to be happy about paying for that plowing. You know, this, there's just a lot of issues seems to be related with squeezing that last unit in there. If you didn't have that last unit, those, those other two units could be rotated. They could have driveways off of Brecken core, just like everything else. You would have a natural buffer to the CC, to the currently zone CC area. So I, I guess I, to me, folks, it, it seems like we are trying to literally, when I read through this, shoehorn that last unit in and it's causing variances. And I think there's a potential for future problems where we have no buffer to a commercial zone. And if you just dropped one unit and rearranged it a little bit, you know, it would, it would seem to me to be a lot more palatable to, to that community. So that's, that's really all I had to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, do you have anybody else lined up in the wings?
Yes, let me, let me get there. So we have some questions and most of them, three, three of them are from Linda Martin. Can I bring Linda Martin into the meeting? Linda, can you hear us? You have to unmute yourself, Linda. Hello, Linda.
Your video is not on. No, you're not Linda.
Linda, can you hear us? Okay. I've done all that I can. I'm just going to read her questions, Mr. Chairman. So she submitted a question. She's concerned about turning from Highway 24 onto Morning Sun. Cars then turning left into the new area will back up traffic coming and going to and from Morning Sun. She then wrote another question, during the summer months when traffic on 24 is slow or stopped, many people or tourists turn onto Morning Sun to Sun Valley and cut through that area in order to avoid Highway 24. That traffic, along with normal Sun Valley traffic and Morning Sun traffic and Sunnywood traffic is going to create a hazard, especially when you then introduce an apartment complex. And her last question was, I second the young man who said that just because there's open space left, doesn't mean we need to build it out. Those were the three questions she had submitted. There is another question that was submitted. It was by an anonymous attendee. And that question is, would the access into the CC portion be off of Morning Sun as well?
We don't do anonymous.
Oh. Well, let me answer that question. The access off of the highway into the community, commercial zone, into the commercial zone is proved by CDOT and it would be the access into that commercial property.
Do you have anybody else?
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman, and nobody else has their hand up. Mike, I believe you've had your, you, you still have your hand up, but I think we've answered your questions there. You took it down. Thank you. That is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, we will close the public hearing for public comment. And at this point, we'll talk to any, any rebuttable rebuttal from the applicant. That would be the next procedure. You don't have to, if you don't want to.
Well, the commercial will be mostly from the proposed CDOT entry from Highway 24 directly on the next time around. So I don't think it's going to affect the entry we have now to that extent. Uh, also keep in mind that at the highest traffic volume, there's six cars coming in at one time on that turn that everybody's concerned about. That's one every 10 minutes. As far as unit 14, uh, we will definitely have a barrier there permanently between unit 14 and commercial.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go to the next item, which is commissioners ask any final questions. So it's your turn. Anybody? Having no final questions asked, then the commissioners can begin deliberation. Any expressed opinions or evidence or things that you would like to talk about among yourselves or us? Hearing none, I would suggest that we would encourage a motion in a second and let's move forward.
I'll make a motion. This is Peter. Can you hear me, John?
Yep. Go ahead.
That we, we recommend approval of this project as outlined in the staff recommendation with all, with the several variances that are indicated. And Laura is going through them right now. If you want me to read them all, I can, but I don't think I need to. That we recommend approval of this project to the city council with the various variances that have been indicated by city staff.
Here, this is Lee. Can I ask, would you like to add to that a condition indicating that along the east property line adjacent to the park, that there would be no outbuildings?
Who is speaking?
This is Lee.
Okay.
That's right, Lee. I'm, I'm sorry, John. I, I forgot the, what we just talked about and that we add to it some type of condition that there would be no outbuildings along the east side as we discussed during the comment period.
Laura, would the way to do that be to add that as a 2E, a note, a note on the plan to that effect?
I think the better way to do that would be to make it a condition of the drafting of the covenants when the first filing comes through, that the covenants require that there be no outbuildings on the east setback. So you could, you could add it as, um, let's see here.
2D with the additional text added then, I guess.
Yeah. Add 2D, add 2, 2D. And that further that the covenants specify no outbuildings along the east boundary.
And I would like to add a couple more conditions and then I'll entertain a second and I'll make one if nobody else does. Okay. I want to see nobody, no parking on, on Sun Valley. I drive that in the morning, going over to Walgreens a lot. And there are tons and tons of older, older folks, younger people, dogs, walking down there, kids. And there is no sidewalks on that at all. Something's got to be fixed there because unless you're going very slow and, and watching that, and the sun's right in your eyes if you're coming, if you're coming from, from town, going out of town, that, that's got to be a condition. You can't park cars there. It's way too narrow. Somebody's going to, somebody's going to get hit or run over there. I would sure like to see that added to it.
How can we add, how can we add a condition, parking on Sun Valley to this, to this applicant's request for permanent permit in Wrenken, Wrenken Heights? The city can, the city can choose to put no parking signs there, if you wish.
That, we can work that out. If we can't work that out, what else we're going to get done? What I'm saying is we can work that out. And the, and another thing is we've got to, we've got to work with CDOT on this thing. And we would like to see the developers enter with the city and work some agreements out to get that intersection safer than it is to do that. And I think we can do that without a major expense to you guys there for doing that. I just think we can. Laura, if you'd get the picture pack, we'd like to see your pretty faces. I'm reading something on the screen. Oh, there we go. Look at that. Thank you.
I had something I wanted to mention about whether we can put in the covenant, something about garbage being put out only in the morning? Or is that already kind of citywide?
It's already in there. You can't do that.
Okay.
I can't put mine out. You can't do that. Hey, John? Yes, Jerry? Um, I've got a quick question that came up as we were talking about outbuildings. Is there a requirement to replace trees that are cut? He addressed that when he opened up that he was going to plant more trees in there to, to, to fill that up. And, and he, and the developer talked about that earlier, Jerry. Okay. Is there going to be any trees planted behind and between the, the back of the buildings and the park for a separation? Yeah, that's what we were talking about along. Okay. Offense, yes. Okay. I missed that.
Laura, I'm not quite sure where we're at with my motion.
So Peter, you did make a motion to approve as conditioned by staff and adding a condition to, I think it was 2D, that the covenants also include no outbuildings along the east side setback. That was the only addition that you had added. Um, I think the rest of the commission needs to weigh in on John's proposals for additions related to the CDOT improvement of that intersection and the no parking on Sun Valley. Although those are issues that we should be working out independent of this particular development and that's.
We also add to that no personal storage, not just sheds, but suddenly you see people storing all these extra trash cans, boats or whatever, and you're going to see it from the road and from the Sun Valley Park. It should say no storage sheds or personal storage.
For the, for the.
On the back.
Who they are. We have no screen. We don't know who's talking.
This is Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky.
So if we could add, add or personal storage along, along the Sun Valley Park area, because otherwise you could look up and I guess all you'll see is junk.
Divide, define personal storage.
Um,
$30,000 boat.
Could be a boat. It could be extra trash cans. I mean, any type of personal storage would be off limits.
A barbecue grill?
Um, correct. I don't think a barbecue grill should be seen from a park.
They have outdoor patios.
No barbecue grill? It's on American.
Well, I just meant, I just meant in that court, that area where we're not going to allow any storage sheds or personal items being stored.
That's where the outside patio is.
No, because this, where the fence is up by the fence. You guys were stating no storage sheds along the Sun Valley Park area.
That is their personal space. This is Sally. That is their backyard where a patio or a deck is going to be. Typically you have lawn chairs, maybe bicycles, store your bicycles and your grill.
Okay. I thought there was 25 feet between the actual unit itself and. Okay, I thought there was 25 feet between the actual unit itself and the fence line along Sun Valley Park. And I thought we were talking about they couldn't put storage units up by the fence. I guess I must be not following.
Vicky, in that 25 feet.
So the patio, the surface concrete pad is allowed. There just can't be any buildings and structures in that 25-foot setback. And the applicant has agreed to put it in the covenants.
Okay.
And the covenants are enforceable by the homeowners association that will be established and enforced by them.
Okay.
This is Ellen. I just had one other small thought. Possibly in that area or on that fence, a small berm with plantings, but then the trees and everything might grow too high and block a view. Of course, I don't really think that's going to happen, but I was considering a small berm.
So Peter, we are at, you made a motion.
Not yet.
Oh, Larry's got more, sorry.
A little more discussion about John's comment. I think that's very important. That, and we talked about this earlier, that CDOT has been requested to review this project and we have not got comments. I think it's very important that CDOT weigh in regarding this project and the impact it may have on that intersection. And certainly, we heard testimony today during the hearing that the neighborhood has very sincere concerns about the traffic in that area. So I would also include an additional condition that CDOT must review. I hate to have them dictate whether this project is approved or not, but somehow get their input and incorporate that input. And maybe we do that before it goes to the City Council for their final consideration. Just a thought.
Larry, and I agree with you, they should have no ability to turn this down. We're asking them questions that we think there are concerns, like speed limit and different things like that. I'm not asking them to give an open checkbook to do this. I want to find out why they're not helping us with the safety.
I agree.
And I think you agree with that as well.
Yes.
Anything else, folks?
So we need to know if the Commissioners agree to add what conditions. I know that Peter, in his motion, did add the no outbuildings. But you, as a Commission, need to decide what other conditions you want to add.
I'll second Peter's motion to adopt the staff recommendation with the supplement to Section 2E that was described a moment ago.
All right, so we have a first by Peter, a second by Lee. Do you want to do roll call?
Well, that's my job.
Sorry.
All right. Anyway, okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other further discussions on the motion? If none, we'll call for the question.
Devoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Even though it's taking away prime dog walking property for me, yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carrick?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Henlund?
Yes.
And Scanlon.
Jerry, wake up.
Scan.
Peter, I mean.
Peter.
Peter, where you at?
Peter, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I was muted, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And this case will move forward to the City Council agenda on August 20th. And I would like to say to our new residents in the community, we welcome you to Woodlum Park. We are two-thirds built out in our community. Our total population growth is going to be capped at 13,600 people. We are at about 8,200 people at this point. The issues with the highway have been longstanding in our community. We have tried to work with the community for a reliever route or a bypass that is still very much on in our future. And hopefully, you will not get too discouraged as we feel growing pains in our last one-third or that we have to grow here. So thank you for coming to our community. And private property rights do play a big role in being able to grow and grow wisely.
I've been I've been here for 24 years and I don't want to happen what you're talking about. And I'll do everything I can to ever stop that from taking place. I've been here a long time. Think about it.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we look forward to a lively session next time. Okay.
Reports?
Shall we take?
Reports. No, we can't.
Okay, excuse me. Do we have anything on, let's continue on. Any reports from anybody? Sally always has one.
I have just a few. If you can if you can go outside so we can finish our meeting, Mark? Can, can you go outside so we can finish our meeting? Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that we do not have any cases for August at this point. So August 13th or August 27th, there may be cases for the September 10th meeting. So do plan on attending or marking your calendars for September 10th. And then the Chairman and I wanted to ask if you would be interested in shifting our start times to 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM? Since we're doing Zoom meetings. And we can take a poll if you'd like or give your input now.
Or think about it and let Sally know.
Okay.
I have no problem with a six o'clock start.
And I have no.
Neither do I.
Ellen has no problem with it.
Peter is.
Would this be, this is Vicky, would this be something that would require public input so that they have a chance to voice their opinion on it? Would it be something that would have to be?
That's a good.
Part of adjustment change there is the six.
Okay.
I'd say for, this is Lee, usually it's, usually it'll work for me. I would prefer it at seven just because it's, it's an evening meeting. It's going to run into the evening, even if we start at six and have more of the day available. I happen to be retired now. For people who aren't retired, whether on the board or coming onto the board, later in the evening gives them more flexibility as to time leaving work. That was critical one, would have been, would have been critical when I was working. I would prefer leaving at seven for public, public attendance as well. I think it's easier to do that. But as I say, I mean, as far as I know, generally, I'll be able to make it at six.
Sleep on it, let her know. We don't have to make a decision.
We'll do a poll, an official poll, but I appreciate the input.
We could think about 6:30 as well.
There's a compromise.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ellen. At this point, we're going to adjourn our regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Quick, we're not going to hear any more about our favorite topic for the past year?
Yes, we're going to move.
The work session.
Right into it and we'll.
That'll be the work session. Okay, thank you.
Stay online.
Five-minute break.
Oh.
Body break. We'll be back here at quarter of nine, five minutes.
Won't take long.
So I'm going to take advantage of that. And anybody else can too?
Can anyone, can you hear us now? Yes. No. 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 Yeah, no. We think that Laura will be able to unmute everyone.
If she can, it'll be a real short meeting.
No.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to ask everyone to unmute themselves. I don't know what I did, but I unmuted. Or I muted everybody.
We unmute, Lee, if you're still there, unmute yourself. Same way you, you, Jerry.
I just, I just did. It says the host is not allowing participants to unmute themselves, but I did let me unmute myself, so.
You're fine. You're on.
Okay. So just Vicky and Jerry, you're still muted. And that's it. Everyone else is unmuted, so.
Yeah, because now I'm unmute, unmuted.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. I'll stop playing with the buttons.
Okay, so since last September, the Commission has done an amazing job of working on a code amendment for single-family residential with uses within the multifamily suburban and multifamily urban zones. The draft ordinance that was prepared in May was presented to City Council for their edification and look at during a joint work session on June 11th. Most of you participated in that City Council work session. We came away without having clear direction from the City Council as to whether they endorsed the Planning Commission's recommendation or felt like something different should be proposed. So as a result of not getting clear direction, I drafted a questionnaire that had very specific questions so that we could get a straw poll from the City Council members. And I drafted the questionnaire with the mayor and with Councilman Neal, taking the draft and finalizing that. And then moving forward with getting votes or opinions from the council members. And the very first question was, would you support eliminating single-family uses in the multifamily zones? And eliminating sections N1 and N2. So there were four council members that said yes to that question. And this was something that even the Planning Commission debated over a couple of work sessions. Councilwoman Case and Councilwoman Labarre said no to that. However, if, since the majority of our City Council members at this time believe that single-family should not be allowed in the multifamily zone, I think. I think we have clear direction that we modify the draft ordinance and eliminate that and then bring that ordinance back to the planning commission so you can look at it one more time and then schedule the hearings so that we can adopt the amendments before the moratorium expires in January of 2021. They were okay with the definitions, so that was good to get that feedback. But they did not want to have any special standards for single-family, did not want single-family in the multifamily zone at all. There was also quite a discussion about open space and how the open space is calculated for multifamily and single-family projects. And was even suggesting that the side yard setbacks be eliminated from the open space calculations. And after greater discussion with the city council on July 9th, they decided to table any discussions about open space to the comprehensive plan process and get input from the community. So I felt that we now have good direction that we can modify the draft ordinance and be able to get support with an amendment to the zoning regulations, at least through the planning commission and the city council before the moratorium ends. So with that, I'd be happy to open up any questions about that direction now that we've received.
Sally, what became of conditional, of conditional use for other types of structures beyond single-family?
A great question. They did not seem to have an issue with that, but I will get clarification about adding or changing the permitted uses to conditional uses.
Okay, because those two points are not inconsistent. They work, actually they work perfectly well together.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay.
One of the advantages that we have is that we'll have a full council back after the November election. So we'll have seven people on the council, so it can't be three, three and that kind of stuff, which has happened before. And that will give us a chance to have another, another, another ear listening to what's going on. And that'll take place and there'll be a lot of discussion and I'm sure that'll end up heated, who's going to be there, but that'll all be over with when we get together again.
Oh, so Sally, this is Peter. So just to clarify what John just said. So you're not looking to do anything with this until after the next election?
I think we could hold the planning commission's public hearing on this.
Okay.
We don't want to push it too far because November and December become very involved with budget issues as well. So we'll want to get it on the city council agenda no later than the second meeting in November.
Oh, is there any reason not to do it, you know, sooner than that and just get it finished? So we don't keep living with this sort of challenge?
We could, we could get it finished because we do know that we have four votes that was.
You think, you know, but you know, whatever happens in a, in a questionnaire can, you know, vary quite a lot when people are sitting, having to actually formally vote. But presuming that it doesn't change, I don't know, you and John are better judges of the political climate in town. It just seems to me that if, not because we've been at this for a long time, but if we're reasonably certain that this could pass as is, and I have no issue with the no single families since I started that in the first place and then backed away from it, and here we are again. I would just ask you to consider, I'm not suggesting you do it, but asking you to consider getting it on the agenda sooner rather than later instead of going through an entire process again with a new council member who may or may not be interested in or want to deal with planning commission type issues.
Mr. Larson, you're holding up a sign nobody can read.
Lore. Unmute me, Larry. Will you unmute Larry? Lore is muted now too.
You can unmute yourself?
No.
Or Larry didn't do anything. You, what are you doing him?
There we go. Lore just did it. Thanks.
Okay.
Are we going to have another work session on the proposed ordinance before the hearing?
It's up to the planning commission. I can draft it, send it out to all of you and then you can look at it individually and let us know if you're ready to move forward with the hearing or if you'd like to have a work session.
I'd love to have you submit a draft with those two provisions in it. And if people don't hate it, if we're meeting on September 10th, vote on it and then get it to the city council whenever they're willing to hear it. And as Peter, as Peter said, if longer you wait, other things happen, new people, somebody new comes in and it's just, let's, if we can dispose of this, let's do so.
Well, we do have two open meetings in August now.
We do, but I was hoping we wouldn't meet, quite frankly.
You know, that's, that's the only thing. I don't, I don't mind waiting an extra couple of weeks or something. September 10th is fine, but we're pushing this. But that means we could get it to them in November or October, so we don't end up stretching this into January and, you know, it's just, it's a problem.
How about if I complete the draft within the next two weeks? So you'll have it after the first week in August. That will give you a chance to look at it, know whether we need to have a work session.
People see the, Lore, did you see the message? Ellen's trapped in the muted world. Vicki, Vicki's trapped in the.
Holly, let me, let me see what's going on.
Hello.
There.
There's Ellen.
Um, there's Peter and Vicki. All right. How's that?
Vicki's.
Unmute Vicki, there.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea just to go forward with it because otherwise we'll have to re-educate somebody back in November and go through the whole process all over again. It's kind of like a Band-Aid. Let's just rip it off and be done with it and we can go on to the next project.
Vicki, the only thing is, is that after that article came out in the Courier, which was far more contentious than it actually was, okay, some, there's, there's some, there's some argument for just letting this settle down a little bit. Not a long time, but enough that we can get a little water over the dam before we go back at it again.
Or plan on September, maybe?
September would be good.
Yep.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
We'll.
I don't like waiting until after the election because goodness knows what's beyond the plate of the city council as this year kind of unfolds and unravels.
Hopefully it will improve.
Well.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Good luck.
Okay, that's all that I have for the work session.
You go home and you have a great summer and finish it out and stay safe.
Yes.
So we have a question from Mike Mackay on the work session. Do you want to hear what he has to say?
Yes.
Mike Mackay submitted a comment, waiting for seven council members seems unethical. And that was his comment.
Okay.
Sorry.
Did he give an alternative?
No, do you want me to bring him in?
Oh, we're done. I'm going home.
All right.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Stay safe.
Bye Sally.
That's all. Goodbye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.
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 But in other words, when we get, when we get the map up there, if somebody talks, we need to go right back to it with the voices unless we're.